I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um. Let's start with, um, we can start with open forum. Um, and, um, I would first, uh, like to start off, um, by, um, saying, um, goodbye and thank you to Samantha Gray, who has, uh, been, uh, the procurement officer slash, uh, administrative, uh, assistant in the town hall, uh, for I believe the past, um, two years. Um, Samantha left us last Friday, um, uh, and, uh, we were all sad to see her go, but she had an opportunity, um, for herself that, um, she decided to take. Um, Samantha was a terrific, uh, asset and help to, uh, everybody in town hall. Um, and, um, we thank her for her, uh, years, uh, here and her devotion, um, and her, um, enthusiasm. And we wish her well in her next venture. Um, so thank you very much, Sam. Um, the next item that I have, um, on our, um, open forum is, um, the select board. Um, would like to congratulate, um, Alan Kwan, who, uh, is a Westford student. Um, Alan won first place, uh, in the regional Braille challenge, uh, at the varsity level. Um, and I believe that, uh, that qualifies him to go on for, um, the, uh, finals, which I believe are sometime, uh, within the next month, although I'm not sure. But, um, I, um, also know that this is not the first time that, uh, Alan has, uh, won, uh, a, uh, Braille challenge, uh, I believe he did it several years ago. Um, but, um, congratulations to Alan, um, what a terrific and tremendous accomplishment, uh, by you. And, um, as you go forward to the next round of finals, we all wish you, uh, the best of luck. So congratulations, Alan. Um, uh, and, uh, finally for me, uh, just want to remind everybody of town meeting, which is Saturday, March 25th at 10:00 AM, um, in the, uh, uh, gym at the Westford Academy. So just reminding everybody, uh, of our town meeting, um, and to be there and to participate in our town government, because this is where, uh, government is made. This is where we set the budget. This is where policies are set and direction is given to the select board. So we, uh, encourage, uh, all of you, uh, to come to town meeting. Um, and I'm told by the moderator that there's going to be a terrific food truck there as well. So, um, that is all I have. Does anybody from the board have anything? Uh, Tom?
Uh, just letting people know if you want to get prepared for the town meeting before the town meeting. There's a huge amount of materials on the town meeting webpage. Uh, and also draw your attention to some excellent explainer videos created by town staff around the 51 Main Town Center project. And Kristen, are those on the town meeting page as well, or they want to go to the 51 Main page for that?
We have linked all the videos, uh, for 51 Main in that page to the town meeting page. So I think it's best for all town meeting members just to go to the 2023 annual town meeting page. Um, we also highlighted it on Facebook last week, and I'll be putting that again out this week. Uh, but they can go to the 51 Main page as well in the, uh, permanent town building committee if they prefer. But everything is uploaded, uh, thanks to Eric and Dan today on the town meeting page.
Super. So just Google town meeting and, and you can check out all the info. There's a lot. Thanks.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments from the board? I don't see any, but, uh, from the audience, I see that, um, Al Prescott has his hand up. So, um, Eric, if you could, um, uh, unmute Al. Al, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to say that as this work with the firearms business bylaw continues, that I'm a little disappointed in how the select board has approached this issue. I would have thought that the select board would might try to learn more and, and foster some communication between various members within the town as opposed to just immediately commissioning some sort of bylaw that, in the opinion of myself and a lot of people who think like me, favors one group of, of residents, but seems to, uh, discount, uh, the value of a completely different subset of residents. I'm surprised that the select board doesn't sit there and, and urge a tabling of this matter altogether and the formation of a citizens committee to discuss this and, and try to learn, understand more about this. That's all I have to say, but thank, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Um, uh, oh, um, and one other thing for, um, open forum, and this is from the League of Women Voters. Um, they would like me to remind you that the preview of town meeting and the town meeting warrant is this Thursday night, um, at 7:30. Um, it is virtual, um, and I, um, assume you can go to the League of Women Voters website and you can then find, um, uh, you can, uh, register, uh, to, um, attend. And actually, yes, um, I just got another note that tells me that you can register at, uh, L W V dot westford.org, which is indeed the League of Women Voters website, and it's Thursday at 7:30. Um, okay, um, not seeing anything else for open forum. Um, we can go to our 7:05 PM item, which is a request for a change of manager on a general law, Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, Convenience Store Wine and Malt Beverage License for Rapid Refill, 498 Groton Road. Uh, Justin Lord is now the proposed manager. Um, uh, first let me ask, uh, Patty, um, is everything, uh, in order here?
Yes, finally, I got. Sorry about that.
No worries. Um, so everything is in order for this and, um, uh, and let me, uh, let me just ask you why I have you and also for the next item, which is to change the doing business as, um, uh, from, um, uh, for craft beer seller to C, oh no, that's something different. Never mind. We'll get to that in a minute. Um, so everything is in order for this. So, um, is there a motion to approve a request for the change of manager for, um, uh, the, uh, uh, the wine and malt beverage, uh, license for rapid refill?
To move.
A second?
Aye.
All those in favor? And we're back virtual, so we have to poll. Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Um.
Andrew, you do have a hand up, and I'm not sure what it relates to.
Oh, I do. Yes, um, Mr. Cassis has his hand up.
Justin Lord's experienced, and he's had 25 years experience in the business. But you already approved it, I'm told, when you're, when you're ahead, quit.
Good enough and good advice. Thanks. Have a good evening.
All right. Bye bye.
Um, okay, um, we're at our 7:10 PM item, which is a request to change the doing business as on the Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, All Alcohol Package Store License for Craft Beer Seller to CBC Liquors. Um, Patty, is, uh, everything in order here?
Yes, this is a simple transaction of a DBA, and we just need paperwork, really. Everything's just fine.
Okay, um, with that, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, next, we're at our 7:16 PM item, which is our consent agenda. And we have on our consent agenda, a request, um, for the Easter Egg Hunt Magic Show Crafts for Kids. The applicant is Grace Community Church. The date is April, Saturday, April 1st, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, April 2nd, 2023. The time is from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have a request to place veteran signs on the common for Memorial Day. The applicant is Westford Remembers. The date is Friday, May 26, 2023, to Saturday, June 3rd, uh, 2023. Um, the applicant, uh, the next one is, uh, a request for veteran signs on the common for Veterans Day. The applicant is Westford Remembers. The date is November 4th, 2023, to November 12th, 2023. We have a banner request for the Apple Blossom Festival and Parade. Uh, the applicant is Stephanie Eck on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of Westford. The dates are Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023, to Saturday, May 13th, 2023. The location is in front of the First Parish Church. Um, and then, uh, we have a request, uh, for a banner, uh, for, um, Memorial Day. Um, and, uh, the applicant is Ryan Copley of our Veteran Service Officer. The dates are Friday, May 19th, 2023, to Monday, May 29th, 2023, and the location is in front of the J V Fletcher Library. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
A second?
Aye.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we are at our 7:20 PM item, which is a joint meeting with the FINCOM, uh, to hear an update on the Cameron Senior Center HVAC project. Um, and I believe that, uh, Chris Karpinski from the Permanent Down Building Committee and Jeff Goodwin, our Facilities Director, um, and Alicia Monks, um, from CHA Consulting are here to update us. Hi, Chris.
Good evening. And am I coming through?
You are.
Ah, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, we will be briefed this evening. Um, uh, and Jeff and I have coordinated that I will deliver the bad news and Jeff will deliver our path towards good news. So the bad news is that there were no mechanical contractors that responded to our bid package that we sent out and, um, and received, uh, and were anticipating to receive responses last Friday. So, um, our OPM is actively working to figure out, um, to get some feedback from, from the folks that did pull the package and did walk the property to understand what part of the project, um, prevented them from submitting a bid. Um, our current working assumptions are three. Uh, right now it's a very hot market. Our OPM and our mechanical engineer says, um, mechanical contractors are in very high demand right now. And the data that we have to support that is that there were only about three or four firms that looked at the, the project in detail. Um, our second assumption, uh, the contributing factor is that, I mean, I'll know that Cameron is a very challenging building, being an old building and having a number of remodels in our data to support that is, um, the body language that, um, Jeff observed as people were walking through the building and looking at it, especially when they got to the attic. And then finally, our third assumption of why we did not get any responses is that the large number of non-HVAC related problems that, that showed up in the Cameron Senior Center during the last, um, three months, as we've been putting the bid package together, um, probably really turned off a lot of people, um, that were just mechanical only and didn't want to get involved with carpentry and, and bathrooms and all sorts of things like that. So, um, our recommendation from the team is that the town do not go forward with the ask for the estimated $2 million at the annual town meeting. A week from Saturday, we would wish, um, to wait until we actually have, uh, uh, an actual bid, uh, in hand and then ask the town for those funds. Um, and related to that, too, um, we recommend putting a pause on the RFP process for relocation of the Cameron Senior Center, um, uh, service, um, well, during this planned, um, construction period. Um, so, um, Jeff's gonna dive into two requests that we have, um, that hopefully will deliver some good news. Uh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so thank you, Chris, and, uh, thank you for having us here to talk about this tonight. Um, you know, very disheartening that we didn't get a single bidder on this project. Uh, I was mentioning to Chris earlier how I was really excited to get this thing moving. Um, so we're kind of back to square one. Um, we, uh, we allocated funding at last year's town meeting. Uh, 300,000 of that is state ARPA funding, which is going to be expiring in June. Um, so what we're proposing tonight, we're requesting the select board, uh, to, uh, potentially approve, um, some of the code compliance issues that have been fleshed out in the, the bid process for this project. Several items, uh, such as, um, asbestos abatement, uh, a bathroom upgrade, some, uh, stair railing, things that need to be corrected. Um, and there's some miscellaneous other code issues with the building. Uh, we're requesting that we, uh, get approval tonight to use that 300,000 expiring in June to correct these issues, so we can remove those items from the bid package that we hope to put out and, uh, potentially dovetail that with another, uh, with one of the upcoming town meetings. Um, so that would be our first ask. And, um, then that, that kind of segues right into the second ask is, um, looking for a little guidance or approval from the select board to, um, we're, we're trying to sort of gather information from this experience, trying to figure out what made this bid package undesirable for bidders. And we're trying to pivot and, and move forward with a package that we can put back out and hopefully come back to the, uh, a, a following town meeting with some, some actual bids in hand. So, um, we're, we're basically asking for some approval tonight for those two items.
Okay, um, so why don't we take them separately? Why don't we start with the first one, which is your request to use the $300,000 for, uh, code improvements, um, asbestos abatement, um, and I forget the third thing you said. Um, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, Tom, I'm sorry, what?
Bathroom.
Bathroom.
Yeah, everything non-HVAC. That's correct, yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, Tom?
Um, so Chris and Jeff, thanks for being on top of this. I know it's no fun running a project that hits some bumps. It happens all the time. Um, so that sounds like a good approach, and I guess I just, I'm sure, I'm sure I know the answer already, but just want to ask, so we wouldn't be doing, we'd be taking things out that are not HVAC, and we wouldn't be doing anything that would subsequently be disturbed or need to be redone as part of the subsequent project? That, that's a question.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Jeff. No, uh, we, we would not be, um, the, the items that we'd be taking out are, um, just surrounded, are, are around the code compliance issues and the asbestos abatement. Um, there are still going to be some non HVAC items that'll be included in the bid package. Um, for instance, when the mechanical contractors take down suspended ceilings to put up ductwork, they will be responsible for putting that ceiling back up. So, um, we're just going to be responsible for asbestos abatement. Um, the second floor bathroom that we've discussed at a previous meeting, um, my team and I, we will re, will renovate that bathroom. Um, we're still working with Henry Fontaine, the building commissioner, to work on what we can do as far as the stairway railing compliance issues. Um, there were some door hold opens that, that need to be addressed, uh, and, and a few other punch list items, but they're all small items that aren't going to be, um, we won't be taking them apart again during the course of the project.
And, and we're guessing that's about 200K work, just from, you know, back of the envelope, shooting from the hip, um, today. And we asked our engineer from the HVAC side if there's any small items that he thinks could be knocked out, um, with the remainder of these funds, and he's going to get back to us on that. His first answer was that it's kind of a, uh, monolithic, uh, all, all at once type of thing, but he's going to take another look to see, just to make sure that we could use all of that 300K.
Okay, um, Anita, you had your hand up?
I did, but Chris answered it, because I was just going to ask how much of that 300 would apply to all of these different projects. So that was, thanks for jumping in there, Chris. Um, I guess my, I, I, I would support, like, you know, shifting, um, the funds to work on, on a kind of these side projects. I guess I, it'd be nice to figure out what that final list is of everything that you plan on doing or could be covered there, just so that we have a sense of how much in the end that costs.
I agree, and I guess, uh, my question for, for Dan is, um, what if we don't use the full $300,000 and we have some remaining money left over? Um, I, you, I hear we have to spend it, uh, by June, uh, 30th. So, uh, can we take, I assume we can get that money back and reappropriate it before June 30th? If there is something left over, I mean, clearly you've got $300,000, guys, you know. If you can, if you spend the whole $300,000 on, on the project, that's fine. Um, I, I just don't want to give money back to the government to go to the blood lake. Um, so, so Dan. Um, so Dan, I assume we can get that, we can take that money back and, and reappropriate it before June 30th?
Yeah, we can email the state and see if we can reappropriate that for another project, but it does need to be spent by June 30th, is what I understand.
Okay, thank you. So I know this is not something I usually say, but I certainly encourage the two of you to spend as much of the $300,000 as you can.
We'll throw a party.
Um, any other comments or, or questions, um, from the board? Um, I, I don't see any, um, so why don't, um, why don't we vote on this first? Okay, so let's take this, uh, this, this part, this request first. So, um, is there a motion to approve using the $300,000 for, um, as, asbestos abatement, the second floor bathroom, code, uh, upgrades, and any other miscellaneous, non-HVAC related items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any other discussion? So seeing none. Um, all those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now to your second request. Which is?
So our second request is, is really, we're, we're looking for approval to, uh, go back out to bid, uh, on this project. Um, as we mentioned, we, right now, we're kind of, we're trying to gather information through our OPM and, um, our own inferences from what we noticed, and we're trying to address issues that may have turned off potential bidders with this package. So we're, we're really trying to take a hard look at the scope. Um, we're, we're not de-scoping, we're just trying to figure out, you know, what sort of non HVAC aspects may have been a turnoff to potential bidders and, and trying to work with our architect and OPM and engineer to, uh, come out with a bid package that's a little more appealing to potential bidders. Um, right now, we're still, uh, in the information gathering phase as to what those changes might be. Um, but, uh, all thing, that being said, uh, we estimate that we need about two to three weeks to prep and, and, um, work on our bid documents, and that it would be an, an additional eight-week bid period. So all in all, we're looking at about a three-month timeframe to get this thing back out to bid. Um, so that would bring us out to about June 15th, and then we would have a, a 90-day hold on the price. So I guess, you know, if, if everything works out well this time, knock on wood, um, potentially we could be coming back to the fall town meeting with, with bids in hand to, to hopefully get this thing going. So.
Sounds like a plan.
Well, I'm sorry.
Sounds like a plan to me.
I, I hope so.
And the only thing we would want to know is, um, we would want the delivery this June 15th and the 90-day window to align with, uh, special town meeting that, uh, is already anticipated. And I know that, uh, we have at least one that's coming up quickly that's been discussed a little bit, um, not solidified. And then, um, we suspect one in the fall, too. So when there's, um, line of sight to when those special town meetings might happen, then that will be the date that we'll work backwards from to intercept.
Patty, have we set the date? I don't think we've set the date for special town meeting in the fall yet, have we?
No, but typically it is the third Monday, so it would, it's looking like it could be October 16th. Um, sometimes we swap and do a different week if that interferes with the planning board schedule. It's like every other year, we've done something different. However, we've been doing a lot of outdoors, it's special town meetings, and things have changed. And, but no, we're back to normal. I would say it should be the 16th, but that would be, um, the board's call.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Anita?
I had a question about the process, Jeff. So are you asking for, um, just to move forward with a bid without showing us like an updated, would we get a chance to see the updated RFP before you release it? Or is he asked just in general to go out for, to bid again? Because I think I'd like to see the updated RFP before it goes out, if we have time.
I, I would be happy to, to, to share that, um, and.
400 pages, though.
It, it, yeah, pretty, it's not what you'd call a light read, uh, but.
I guess, okay, then let me rephrase.
Go ahead, Anita. You, you can read 400 pages.
You know, 400, that's not on my, but it's more of like, you know, I think we'd like to understand what the changes are in the end of what you're making. Um, if it's not a 400-page document, I'm, I'm fine with that, but just being able to hear from you again before it goes out.
Yes, our, our intent, our intent right now is not to significantly alter the mechanical scope from the design that we've been moving forward with all along. I think Chris and I both feel strongly that the design that we presented is the best of what we can put into the Cameron Senior Center. And I, at this point, we are not willing to, um, sacrifice any of the quality of what we're hoping to put in. Uh, we just really want to try and identify what we might have missed and what, what may, maybe we can make more appealing in a, in an updated bid document. So, uh, at this point in time, there would be no major changes to the, the design of the system or the scope. And, and we're happy to be fully transparent with the board of, of what we choose to go out with that new bid package.
Yeah, essentially what was proposed, um, and approved a year ago at, at town meeting, um, minus all the stuff that we discovered in the last three months, like bathroom stairs, um, you know, stuff in the basement and such. Um, and the only addition that I know that we have is that in the last month, our engineer found another opportunity for another, uh, efficiency gain and added that in as a bid alternate. Um, so, uh, no changes to the scope, just one act, uh, option item to, uh, have a more efficient system. Um, and we'll wait till the cost comes back on that option before we, uh, make a decision on that.
John, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just said a 400-page RFP.
I, I'd love, this, this is my first rodeo, so, um, I think Jeff and Tom have it such. It's, it's usually the specifications are, you know, tons of pages. Um, I was very surprised by it, but, uh, Jeff has more experience than me.
Okay.
Um, so I think, um, I guess, um, is there a, um, is there a motion to support the, um, uh, going out to bid again on the, um, Cameron HVAC system after gaining information to make, you know, uh, to modify the bid, uh, before, you know, uh, to hopefully attract people or how, I don't know, something like that. Basically, is there a motion to support going out to bidding, rebidding the, um, uh, Cameron HVAC system?
To move.
A second?
Second.
Um, and all those in favor? John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Chris and Jeff, thank you for all your hard work on this, um, and all the time and effort that you've, uh, put into this. Hopefully, um, hopefully the second time will be, uh, more productive and more fruitful. Uh, John?
Jeff, I had a question about, uh, did you reach out to the, um, prospective bidders, uh, people you sent the pro, the project to, and see, uh, why they didn't bid on it?
They're doing that now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're in that process right now, um, and we're waiting for some feedback from them.
And we started that immediately, uh, on Friday afternoon. So, yeah, the day, hopefully the date will be.
Okay.
Sorry, Jeff.
No, no problem.
Yeah, well, we, Jeff and I thank you for all your consideration, too, and your time and your help with this. And, and in particular, your encouragement, um, Tom, your comments earlier are appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we are at our 7:40 PM item, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners and the FINCOM to discuss the fiscal year 2024 proposed water rate increases. So, um, Steve Cronin, Mark Warren, and Larry Panero. Steve Cronin actually going to be able to join us? I would think he's a little busy tonight. Steve, you are here.
I am. Thank you.
I think I, you've had a busy day.
It's been a busy one, that's for sure. We're still out there, uh, plowing away, and, uh, hopefully this storm won't stall for too long, and we can have, uh, everybody back on the road safely in the morning.
Well, we appreciate all your effort and all of, uh, the folks out, uh, the Highway Department and anybody else, our, our contractors who are out there plowing for us. Uh, thank you all for your hard work. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. So anyway, at your February 14th meeting, we presented the proposed fiscal 24 water rate increase on behalf of the Board of Water Commissioners. That proposed rate increases in response to several factors, including expense increases due to inflation and persistent supply chain issues, some new restrictions we're expecting in our groundwater withdrawal permit, and newer, and emerging regulations for per and polyfluoral substances, which are known as PFOS or forever chemicals. You asked us to provide you with some additional information on how the commissioners arrived at the 22% increase to help the better, to help the public better understand why it's necessary. During the course of the budget cycle, we presented the water commissioners with several different rate increase scenarios that were designed to meet the object, the objectives of maintaining our current levels of service, adequately funding our salaries, operating expenses and existing and future debt obligations, planning for our new unfunded PFOS mandates and reinvesting in the water system. Each of these scenarios were focused on trying to ensure that our fund balance stays above the minimum reserve level. It's been established by the department. Maintaining an adequate free cash balance in order to fund capital moving forward and to minimize the increase to the average customer's water bill. Mark Warren, our water superintendent is here tonight and he's going to present to you with a brief overview of four of the several scenarios that were considered by the water commissioners to help better explain what their decision-making process was.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Eric, could you, could you click on the, the second slide, please? Thanks. So we'll get right into it. This is our first scenario. This is actually what we presented back on February 2014. It's a 22% rate increase in FY '24. And two subsequent 15% increases in FY '26 and FY '28. And slide this over here. A few important things to know here with this scenario. We do end up with a positive cash reserve balance, but it's, it's below the American Water Works Association recommended level. And it doesn't give us the flexibility that, that Steve had mentioned in regards to funding capital, capital projects. And it's really just not a healthy cash reserve. This also results in an average water rate for our customers of $668 come fiscal year 2030. And another thing note here is that we are actually going to be operating deficit and fifth, I want to say fiscal year '26. So this is not really the position we want to be in. Eric, could you click on the next slide? All right. So this is just a graphic represent, representation of that scenario one. Again, as you can see, our reserve fund balance does dip below the recommended minimum level come fiscal year 30. Eric, can you switch to scenario two, please? Okay, so this is our second scenario. This is a 22% rate increase in fiscal year '24. And in fiscal year '25, we implement something called the PFOS remediation fee. So this, this fee is treated like a debt exclusion. It's a flat fee that's, that's billed out quarterly. And it's tied directly to the debt obligation for the construction of the PFOS plants. And as you can see here, we do, all right, it's hard, my, I got to slide this around here. We are able to, our, our revenues do keep pace with our dispersments. So we're not operating in deficit. And we do end up with a much healthier surplus reserve at $4.1 million. And that does allow us to respond to emergencies. It allows us to compensate for years when our revenues are, are less than our dispersments and it also allows us to fund smaller capital projects without having to bond. And as you can see in fiscal year 30, the average customer bill is $564, considerably lower than the previous scenario. Next slide, please. All right. And again, this is just the graphic representation of that scenario. As you can see, the, the minimum cash reserve is significantly above, sorry, the, our ending cash reserve is significantly above the minimum level, which is, which is good. Next slide, Eric. Thank you. So this is our third scenario. It's a 15% rate increase in FY '24. With the PFOS remediation fee implemented starting in FY '25. This, in this scenario, again, we're, it's, we are operating in, in deficit. And we do end up with a significantly smaller surplus reserve at $2.7 million. It is above the minimum, but just barely. And it really doesn't provide us the flexibility that Steve had discussed earlier. And in this scenario, we end up with an average bill of $538 by FY '30. Next slide, please. And again, this is just the graphic representation of scenario three. And you can see we are above, our, our ending cash reserve is above that minimum reserve, but, but just barely. So it's, we're meeting, we're meeting the minimum, but it's not a really healthy position. Next slide, please. Thank you, Eric. So this is our fourth scenario. This is an 11% rate increase in FY '24 and a subsequent 11% increase in FY '25. And starting in FY '26 would implement the PFOS remediation fee. And in this scenario, you can see that we are, we are not operating in deficit. We do end up with a healthier ending surplus reserve of 4.3 million dollars or above the minimum significantly. That is an appropriate, is an appropriate level for us. And we do end up with a average water bill of $568. Next slide, please, Eric. Okay, again, this is what it looks like in the graph. As you can see, that ending cash reserve is a healthy level as compared to the, the minimum recommended level. Next slide, please, Eric. Okay, finally, this slide shows the, the impact to the average water bill based on each of the scenarios. As you can see here, the first scenario, we end up with the, the highest average water bill. Scenarios, I think it's two and four are right there in the middle. And scenario three produces the lowest average water rate. Eric, can you scroll on? Thank you. So as, as Steve mentioned back in February, it's, it's important to note that we have not raised rates since 2008, 2009, but in that time, we have accomplished a lot. We've, we've, we've installed two additional water sources, Country Roads, Tepinsky. We've done a lot of water main replacements and upgrades. We put in a new storage tank, a Prospect Hill, and rehabilitated the Town Farm Storage Tank. We've been able to replace the media in both of our, sorry, the filter media, filter media at both of our treatment plants. We've done some critical SCADA upgrades. And we've also done some critical immunis upgrades and we've tied in the Vinebrook Estates neighborhood to the public water system. Eric, can you, well, thank you. But it's also important to note that over the next 10 years, we have over $27 million of, of infrastructure reinvestment projects planned, including the PFOS treatment plants, a new source development, additional water main replacement projects, vehicle replacement, UV system upgrades, additional storage tank rehabilitation. So we do have a lot on our plate. And which is, you know, it's important that we make sure that our rates are, allow us to maintain a, a stable cash reserve and to accomplish many of these projects. And I, oh, okay. As I just mentioned, right now, our dispersments are outpacing revenues. We're using a cash, our cash reserve to account for operating deficit. Without a rate increase, we'll have a negative cash reserve by FY '27. And we did, we did look at additional scenarios with the more gradual rate increases. However, they did not result in a sufficient surplus reserve. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions and comments? Tom, play.
Oh, thanks. Thanks guys for coming back with this. I think this gives us a narrower and clearer view. I think it was important for everyone to realize that in the fiscal year we're in, we're spending $1.3 million more than, than we're bringing in. So we clearly have to fix something in a significant way. I like the idea of doing the PFAS fee transparent to the users. I hope that can be something that scales on use. We talked a little bit about that in an earlier call and that may be a work in progress. But it can be better if big users pay more of that than small users. And looking at the numbers, it looks like if we do the 11 and 11, which is your scenario four, it looks like we get out of deficit for next year or for the coming fiscal year. And I guess I like the idea of breaking the increase into two pieces if we're not operating in deficit in the coming year. So it looks like if we do those two, we can keep out of deficit and stay ahead of the anticipated cost increases. That looks like it spreads out the pain a little bit. So thanks for putting all those numbers together. I've got a much clearer picture of what's in front of us. Thanks.
John, I think you have your hand up.
I just wanted to understand how this PFAS remediation fee works. I mean,
So it's something that we've discussed internally right now. I think it's going to take a little bit of work with DOR to really understand how to implement it. We've seen it implemented in a number of other communities where they've tied a fee directly to capital improvement projects. Groton has done something similar as well as Littleton. Basically, what we'd be looking to do would be to tie the fee directly to the principal and interest payments on the debt incurred for the construction of the PFOS treatment plants. You know, it's going to be a declining debt balance. We would average, you know, that fee over the number of customer service connections we have. So it would be basically, you know, a set fee for each account, not proportional to their usage. It would be charged basically on top of the rate, you know, as a standalone charge. And then by doing that, you know, it gives us the opportunity, if we were to get settlements or if those, you know, we were to get some grant funding, we could offset, you know, those debt obligations and hopefully bring that fee down a little bit over time.
So who pays the fee?
It will be paid by each customer account.
Okay, so that's on top of the, on top of the average fee that we're looking at.
That's correct. It's a, it's a quarterly fee on top of the service charge and, and the, the usage, the customer.
Just to explain one thing, it's, it's, it's included in that average fee. That average fee includes the customer service fee as well as the PFOS fee. So it's including it in those averages that we put on those slides.
Right.
So that is a real, so then you, you have a real savings to the customer there or a real reduction over that first scenario. So you went with 11 and 11, that fee they would see would be $568 a month on the average. And that would include the fee.
Yes, correct. And the reason for that is that fee would be spread out over the, over the course of the life of the loan. So essentially a 30 year fee.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anita?
Yeah, I, I appreciate this revised version of the, the information because it is a lot clearer to see it this way or explained again. I know you've done it a couple of times for us now. I have a question about, so if you're, if the, if the PFAS remediation fee is still to be determined after conversations with DOR and like other, other organizations and stuff, like how did you come up with these estimates then? Was this based on, what is, what are these numbers based off?
It's based on the number of accounts that we have, both residential and commercial. And it's based on, we charge these fees every three months. Like every three months you get a bill and that would be included in the bill as a, as a fixed fee for, for that particular year. Each, in the beginning, the, the PFOS expenses would be just temporary interest. And that fee would be a very small amount, but as we bond the, the treatment facilities, that fee will, will basically correspond to how much our bond payments are. And again, it'll be applied to all the accounts, both residential and commercial, in, in public accounts as well.
So essentially what we did is we took that $18 million bond, we assigned a bond schedule to it. We created an average annual fee based on the, you know, principal and interest payments on that bond and then divided it by each account to come up with the fee per account.
And, and if I understand you, that over time, that, that fee could be adjusted if we got settlement money from the litigation that we're involved in, or if we got grants, or it's, you know, if, if interest rates went down or whatever.
Yeah. So if we, it said, if we were able to refinance that, or like you said, get grants or a settlement, we could apply it directly to that balance on that loan to try to reduce the fee.
Well, like my fellow board members, I very much appreciate you folks going back and doing the hard work and making it much clearer for all of us to understand why you're asking for the increases and how you've calculated them and the impact upon the average water taker. In, in light of the fact that I, I don't see a whole lot of difference between scenario. I think it's two and four. One is for the 22% in the first year and the four spreads it out over two years. And I, I would be inclined to favor that, to spread it out over the water takers so that they don't get hit with it all in one year and that we can spread it out over a little bit over time and make it a, a little less of an impact on all of the water takers when you spread it out over two years. So I appreciate you going back and looking at that and, and doing, doing that calculation. Other comments or questions? Kristen?
Thank you. Just wondering if Steve or Mark or one of the water commissioners wants to just update the board of where the water commissioners are, what their, their vote was and what they might be reconsidering based upon the comments this evening, if at all.
So, I mean, the, the, the water commissioners did vote for the 22% increase back in October and that's essentially where it stands right now. You know, we have reviewed some of these scenarios, but there are no new decisions have been made yet.
You know, to Mark's point, you know, the recommendation was to implement this fee July 1 of '23. You know, commissioners, if it's their purview, have the opportunity to reconsider and revoke that if that's the case. From a staff standpoint, they would need to do that as soon as possible so that we can begin the public outreach process as far as notifying residents and water takers about the increase. That is going to take some time. You know, we intend to use, you know, both the DPW's new Facebook page, bill stuffers, mailings, things to that effect. You know, but we'd like to give our customers as much time as possible so that they can budget for this increase in, in the upcoming year.
Christina?
Um, so Steve, yeah, I guess I'd like to get an idea of what's going to happen going forward because we have town meeting, you know, on March 25th and currently all of the documentation has that 22% increase, no PFAS separate fee. If this is going to be changing, how does that affect town meeting? And you know, what, what are we doing about that?
So the PFOS fee hasn't been considered yet by the commissioners. It's not included in that 22%. That 22% is just to basically fund the operating budget for next year. You know, changing that now, you know, I, we'd have to see what the impact is on the operating budget or we'd have to apply more free cash to offset any potential deficits if we were to see that. You know, town meeting, you know, votes to establish the operating budget. That basically gives us our authorization to spend. That's what we're going to need to operate next year anyway. But the commissioners can, you know, still consider, you know, whether they want to change that 22 to a, a less increase for next year.
I'll just make one other point that even though the 22% is a big hit in the, in the first year, it, it, it actually leads to a, to a lower average residential rate because the compounding effect of two elevens on, on the rate actually increases the average a little bit more. So that's the only point I wanted to make on that.
Okay. Tom Clay? Tom Clay?
So what I heard you describe, Steve, is in terms of the mechanism for the PFAS fee is the same as we talked about on the call that basically estimate the bond expense for a given year and you divide it by the number of hookups essentially. I guess I would just strongly encourage you to explore mechanisms where, you know, a small rate payer on a fixed income pays a proportionate share, not a flat equal share to a very large industrial user that's using tons of water. And I understand because we discussed it, it's a little bit more complicated and there may be reasons to explore there, but it seems much more fair to me if a small water taker on a fixed income is paying a proportional share. And then someone who's drawing a ton of water pays, you know, a larger, appropriately larger share.
Yeah, the commissioners are aware of that. They've had that discussion several times. You know, I don't think they've settled on the actual mechanism for the fee. You know, obviously, you know, discussion regarding that fee proportional to usage is an important one and it's something that they really want to evaluate considerably before they make a decision.
Chauncey?
It's good evening to both boards. As one of the commissioners, I would like to voice that my opinion is that we hold to the original twenty-two percent. Just thought today that the EPA has announced the the levels for PFAS and drinking water to a level here which is almost undetectable. And so our estimates of remediation were based on the twenty parts per trillion as offered by the Commonwealth. So I don't know what effect going down to almost negligible amounts of PFAS is going to increase the the cost of remediation. So I would like to have the flexibility of having the twenty-two percent right at the beginning. Secondly, the commissioners did address how the rate increase would affect the low income or people on fixed income. And we thought that we could have addressed that individually as we have in any hardship cases on a case-by-case basis there. So I think we could address the low users or those low users who have financial difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom McLam?
Yeah, I want to echo the, that I'm thankful for the work that was put into this. And I understand what Larry's saying about, you know, twenty-two in one year is a little bit less than eleven and on top of eleven. However, it is still a lot easier to manage a household budget with an eleven percent this year and eleven percent next year if I know that it's coming as opposed to almost a quarter of the bill increasing. So I would, and I appreciate the fact that we're dealing with some unknowns as Mr. Chu has highlighted. But I think those unknowns are also, that's actually a benefit of doing the PFAS fee to cover the actual costs. You know, and having it tied to that so we can see it come off the bill eventually, even if it is thirty years down the road. You know, from the numbers that we were looking at, the brief look, the eleven-eleven with the additional fee results in a significantly lower bill in ten years to the average user. So you know, I would hope that the commissioners would look at that and you know, we're all kind of tasked with seeing the big picture of the entire impact of the town. You know, the schools have fees that, you know, that we're having to deal with, that, you know, obviously water's having it. We may have highway have, you know, unexpected fees and unfunded mandates at times. We have to just look at it as a holistic impact on a household, as I had mentioned last time. I am certainly not against funding this. I just, I just hope to minimize the financial burden year over year.
Thanks. Titus?
I you know, I just, I don't want people to leave with the wrong impression that there is any consensus on the board that a fee structure is the way we're going to go. You know, we've discussed it at every meeting and we'll probably discuss it at several more. The fact is, we don't necessarily have to make a concrete decision on whether we go with a fee or whether we go with a second rate increase until probably we've gone through another year and see where expenses go for the next year. And I just want to make one point that, you know, Tom had said he feels it would be more fair that lower income pay less and other people pay more. And I'm going to take issue with that and disagree because I truly believe the fairest way for all of the water takers, not the taxpayers, the water takers to be treated is to build the expense into the overall budget and have us each pay the same rate based on our usage. I know that doesn't seem to be popular at the moment, but I want my position to be clear and also have everyone have a realistic expectation that there is no consensus that I've seen on the Board of Commissioners.
Thanks, Titus.
Thank you.
Tom Clay? And Jennifer Claro, I know you have your hand up and I will get to you.
I'll be brief. So Titus, we may be more aligned than it seems. So I wasn't arguing, I was arguing against a flat fee that would allocate the same PFAS fee to all users and saying it should be proportionate to usage. So I'm not saying on a per gallon basis, anyone should pay anything different. I'm just saying it should be scaled to usage. So just want to make sure everyone understood that because obviously I didn't make it totally clear.
Okay. Jennifer Claro has her hand up. So Eric, if you could promote her.
Thank you, Andrea. As you all know, our COA board did submit a letter concerning the twenty-two percent increase. We were very concerned with that for for many reasons, especially for our low-income seniors and for those seniors that are on a fixed income. You know, I think it's also important to realize that, you know, we just, we just had, we just had the water runoff fee that was, you know, initiated and now we're looking at this twenty-two percent increase. And I do think some concessions need to be made. I have heard some discussion amongst the commissioners tonight and between the select board. I know myself and Allison Christopher, our town social worker, met with Mr. Warren just to kind of talk about the rate increase and to see if exactly what would be, what would be possible regarding those that are in a hardship situation and you know, our concern is that, yes, there are funds, there are, there is hardship funds. But those typically come from the Friends of the Cameron Senior Center as well as from Westford Remembers. And there's not an abundance of money. So I was just wondering, I know Mr. Warren was going to take back, one of the things that we discussed was possibly looking at a utility roundup fund where it would give residents the opportunity to round up to the nearest dollar. And those funds could go help those that have been screened to be able to help give some relief to them financially towards their their water bill. And I was just wondering if that's been discussed amongst you all and amongst the commissioners in your meetings.
Jennifer, I can respond to that. So we haven't had a board meeting since since our discussion. So we haven't had a formal group discussion of that roundup program, which I do think has promised, but we, I haven't you know, formally introduced it to the commissioners. But I will at our next meeting.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other comment? I think you know, I think the commissioners have certainly heard our, you know, heard our concerns tonight as long with our our appreciation for, you know, going back and doing the work and coming up with the various scenarios that you have come up with. I think sort of, you know, the major takeaways continue to be, you know, can we can we make, can we smooth this out and make it as, you know, as, you know, not, oh, can we smooth this out over, you know, for the residents over a couple of years? There seems to be, and I recognize and understand Titus, what you said, that there's been no consensus yet, but I think you at least heard from select board members that, you know, having a PFAS fee, you know, called out separately is a transparent way to deal with that and made sense to us. As I said, I recognize, as you said, there isn't, there hasn't been a consensus by the commissioners about that yet. I'm just reflecting what you've heard tonight from all of us here, you know, I think. And then finally, I think, I think we all agree is that, you know, whatever is decided, it is, we all have to do our best to educate the public as soon and as quickly as possible to make them aware and to try and minimize any surprise. And then finally, as Jennifer just said, and as I think Tom has mentioned, you know, to give some consideration to charging, you know, fees based on usage and also perhaps having some sort of fund for those who truly cannot you know, meet any sort of increase or the amount of increase in their fees. Mark, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to touch on something that Chauncey mentioned that's relatively big news. The EPA, in fact, did announce today their draft PFAS regulations. And it does include two of the common compounds, PFAS and PFOA in a single-digit concentrations, you know, for water standards. So that is definitely going to affect the Westford Water Department many surrounding communities. They've also introduced something that's somewhat unheard of and new to the field in that they have a new concept called a health index for four remaining PFAS compounds. It's a, it's a little tricky to figure out, but it's also going to to impact us as well as far as being able to meet the new drinking water standards. So I just wanted to get that information out there. It was big news today.
Well, it also sounds like then you folks need to go back and look at, you know, how these new regs are coming out and how they impact what you've already talked about and whether or not that has a further impact about, you know, what you're going to need moving forward in terms of treatment plants and how we treat PFAS. So it sounds like you've got some homework to do as well before we reach any kind of final decision.
It's a brave new world.
Okay, any other comments tonight? All right. Well, thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you all for all your hard work on this. I expect as you continue to discuss this, or I would hope as you continue to discuss this, that you let us know, stay in touch with Kristen so that we can continue to discuss this as a group moving forward and as you reach your decisions. So thanks again. Appreciate all your help and work. And Steve, good luck. Stay safe out there. Tell all our guys to stay safe.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. We are at our eight-ten PM item, which is a continuation of our ARPA funding requests and to determine allocations and to summarize basically where we are and what funds we have available. It's been a while since we've talked about ARPA. We've had a few other things on our agenda. So Dan, it would be at least for me, and I'm going to suspect maybe from some of the other board members, can you kind of recap where we are? How much we've spent and more importantly, how much we have left to spend?
Absolutely. So this will be a little bit of more comprehensive overview, diving into this a little bit. Today, I'm going to share my screen here so people can see the numbers. So today, we have received all of the ARPA funds that are available, the seven million four hundred seventeen thousand change. We've also expended five million five hundred thirty-seven thousand on seventy-four different projects. And currently we have a balance left of one million eight hundred eighty thousand four thirty-four. So I was speaking with Kristen today. We want to give you an update on the current projects and where those currently stand. So we ran what's called the yearly budget report and we sent it out to departments for comments on where their projects are. So most of them were able to respond today. This is still a draft, but we will be able to update it during the week and get this posted online as well. So overall, out of that five point five million that we have appropriated in projects, we still have just under two million that's still unspent in our bank accounts. So I'll go over a couple of the larger projects here just to show you where we're at. So of course, in a town manager's office, we have money for next year's sustainability coordinator that was appropriated at last meeting. And we have funding for the community wellness coordinator through most of FY twenty-four. The gasoline that we've requested a couple of times this year, we still have thirty-nine thousand remaining, which is great. I'm sure we'll be using that this year. We're in the final stages of the low-income internet access. We're actually waiting to make sure that the quotes are still good that were originally given to us. Once those are confirmed, we can move forward. If not, we have to figure out a little different funding for that. Moving down here, we still have five hundred thousand dollars that's remaining from the Cameron HVAC as part of the one point nine million that's been appropriated so far. We spoke with Chief Chambers today and both the training that we did and the police vehicle has been purchased. These amounts will be closed out as soon as we go through the process with Jesse. So we'll have about forty-eight hundred added to the total once we do that. The million forty thousand that's select board authorized in December, we have about two hundred and one thousand remaining in that. We're expecting this to be wrapped up probably during the summer, early fall. There have been supply chain issues. And, you know, we knew this might happen when we first authorized the project, but we're just waiting on those pieces to come in. They have been ordered. Fire department staffing, that was for the two additional paramedics that should carry us to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. We can look at that and revise the total if we be over the years to be appropriate prior to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. If you don't think it's going to require all that. We also have forty thousand left. Out of a hundred thousand is appropriated for the fire and EMT training. The fire training tower, the entire mountain's been encumbered. We haven't sent them the check yet, but we're expecting the work to be completed by early fall. The schools have a lot of projects that are still underway. They do spend their money pretty fast typically, so they only have three or four that are still open here. Going down, the public health nurse, we have sixty-two hundred left for FY twenty-three to fund the additional seven point five hours per week for her to keep her full time. Van driver. Kristen just sent an offer letter yesterday to a driver to fill that full-time position. It did take quite a while to fill, but that money is still remaining. See rental mortgage assistant, we have seventy-eight hundred left. Jennifer thinks it's more like six thousand according to her records because some money has been committed. And PO hasn't been entered yet. And there are a couple more families that I guess may qualify for the two thousand dollar vouchers. So there could be more like two thousand dollars left at the end of the day if those do go through. The interface mental health referral, this is for that subscription starting January twenty-four. And we still have about nineteen thousand left for the after-school summer camp that we use some this past year to send kids to school that could not, for the summer camp that needed financial assistance. So we'll get this posted on the web once we hear back from all department heads, but that's a sort of a brief overview of where we're at. And then we have this sheet that you see many times of all the requests here. So I'll go through the the list really quickly. We have active assailant training for school safety that was put on by the police. We did this last year and their request Um, we, we did this last year and there are requests out there for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-six at twenty thousand five hundred each. Uh, we still have the placeholder for the fire department overtime for the FEMA deficit. Uh, we're not hearing great news on this, so um we may have to address this sooner than later. I'd like to work with the chief to get that number pared down to um what we actually owe. Um, I know we have to uh do some paperwork on some of the uh, the overhead that the town could charge on some of the projects that were rejected. So we, we'll fine-tune that number and, and update that. Uh, life wellness scan, Deputy uh Chief Denny, he brought this forward in the fall. I know he applied for a grant as well to help subside the cost of this as well. Uh, but he was looking for seventy-seven thousand for all first responders and uh telecommunicators of a, a full-body scan, life scan. Five was the comprehensive request from the school committee um that the board did fund just over forty-nine thousand programs. Uh, that is noted here below for a few of those requests. Uh, there's still a hundred and eighty-three thousand outstanding that was not funded. Um, that is still out there. Uh, six was for the uh G I system, G I S system upgrades. Again, the board funded uh what I say it was five thousand of this initial request to um replace the online G I S viewer, which was not functioning properly, uh, but there is still twenty-seven thousand of theirs request. Uh, seven is from Jennifer Claro for the council on aging. This is for fiscal years twenty-four to twenty-six. To fund the thirty thousand a year for the uh assistance for those in need. Uh, number eight is uh twenty-three hundred dollars for it now for elaborate, so they can host uh hybrid meetings. Uh, nine, ten, eleven are WCAT requests for assorted equipment. I won't pretend to know what these mean, but uh they're out there. Uh, twelve was a placeholder for senior centers supplemental for the HVAC system. Of course, we don't have a figure in there at this point. Thirteen was the uh live caching for uh board meetings, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, fourteen was a transfer to the uh, the new um electric vehicle charging station revolving fund to give it some seed money to, to pay for those overhead costs. Uh, fifteen was uh year three for the community wellness coordinator. Um, we did find about eleven thousand within the operating budget for FY uh twenty-four, but uh most of our salaries are funded within, uh, is funded with ARPA next year. Seventeen was a request back from two thousand twenty-one uh to replace the water mains at the uh Stanley Brook Conservation Area. Eighteen was the uh, the brightly computerized maintenance system. This was, would have been a year three request to tier that into the budget, and this would have been fourteen thousand as compared to the twenty-eight thousand that you just authorized last meeting. Um, nineteen is a request from the Water uh Enterprise for five hundred thousand for PFAS as a placeholder. Uh, twenty is for the, to continue the additional seven point five nursing hours for FY twenty-four at eighteen thousand five hundred. Uh, twenty-one uh was the, the, the Health Department um health assessment and community improvement plan for two hundred thousand. Twenty-two was the Economic Development Committee's request for um support uh in the for the Economic Development Committee uh for forty-eight thousand. Uh, twenty-three was fifty thousand for AB equipment at fifty-one main, if that passes the annual town meeting. And then uh, the twenty-four and twenty-five are for the Clean Energy Sustainability Committee is for, uh, one was for the website. And the other one uh was for some consulting services for the department. So if all, all the requests down here total two million ninety-two thousand and we have a million eighty remaining. So the difference between what's requested and what we have uh available is two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Dan, for this o- overview. Um, it, at least for me, it's really helpful and um uh, to know sort of where we stand and, you know, what the total cost of the projects that we're still looking for funding and the difference. So um, appreciate that. Um, are there questions or comments from the board? John?
Yeah, I had a question about uh that FEMA request for the fire department, that five hundred thousand dollars. What happens if we don't get anything from FEMA? And uh, where are we accounting for that money? Are we gonna pay for that or have we paid for that already or what's happening?
Kristen, you want me to handle this? Answer this one?
Yeah, my hand's up for a different matter. So if you wanna talk about that, Dan, that's great.
Okay, um, so right now we have a deficit in the FEMA grant account of five hundred ninety-six thousand. The, the department revenue isn't, is not going to make us raise that deficit on this year's recap, but they might on the following year. So they give us some time to work with FEMA to get money in if possible. Um, however, if FEMA, if we're denied any future money from FEMA, we, we are responsible for closing that balance. So it'd have to be raised. We'd either have to apply free cash or some other available fund to uh get rid of the balance before they'll set our tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen?
Uh, thank you. Just uh, in speaking with um Andrea a few days ago, um, there are several matters on the list that have been brought to my attention since I've been on board as town manager that you may want to uh take up for consideration for funding this evening. I understand that you might also need time to think about it and to weed through based upon all the really good data that Dan has put together. Um, the two matters that have been brought to my attention are the request to fund the public health nurse at the seven point five hours for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, we do have Ray Dick on the line in case the board does wish to discuss that further this evening. The other item is the request from the Economic Development Committee, uh, and Tom, I'm sure you can speak to this better than I could um, for that funding. And I did speak with the chair this morning and actually will be attending their meeting on Thursday and was pretty clear with them that the board um was very clear at their last meeting that they're not looking to fund positions related to ARPA because that is not sustainable. But it does seem that the E- EDC might be coming back with an amended request to potentially use that money for consulting services. That would be one-time services rather than a reoccurring position. So those are the two that have been brought to my attention uh in the weeks that I've been here. Um, happy to help answer any questions if the board does wanna move forward with those two or any of the others that Dan has presented this evening.
Tom?
Um, so with, with regard to the first one that Chris, Kristen mentioned, that, that seems important and urgent and makes sense for me to take up tonight. Um, I think the Economic Development Committee is looking forward to an opportunity to come to a later meeting uh and give sort of a general update on the sort of state of business in Westford. You know, how do we look relative to other communities? You know, what kinds of companies are we attracting and losing? Um, what kind of information do we have about how the, the constituents that our businesses are doing and how they're accessing services that are available? Uh, and so I know they've been working hard on preparing that, and I think on the back of that, after they've helped educate all of us, um, they do have an interest in um bringing on some consulting services, as Kristen mentioned, to help fill out that picture. But I think they're preparing to make that case so that as long as we're not making a final decision about what gets allocated in the next, you know, couple of meetings, I think they're hoping to get our, to, to do that education piece and make the case. And, and maybe just one other thing, I think, um, it, it seems like it seems like there are probably questions that lots of us have on lots of these. I'm, I'm curious what process we would go to kind of get to final on this, uh, whether we would try to break it up into chunks and cover it in the series of future meetings and then come back and do a master allocation or I guess what the, what the thought is right now.
I, I was excuse me, I was thinking about that in my head is what, you know, what is the process we use to move forward? Um, with this, um, the one that really concerns me is the FEMA reimbursement. And, you know, if we get stuck for anywhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars, you know, how we're gonna pay for that and what we're gonna do. So I guess, Dan or Kristen, do we have any idea when we're gonna hear about that?
I can chime in and Dan, if I missed anything, please speak up. Um, I do know that Chief Targ has been working with MIMA and FEMA on the appeals. Um, and I believe those are due back uh the middle of April, and that could again take another course of thirty to sixty days for the review of the appeals. So um, it's not uh in the next few weeks for sure. Uh, we can get the board a little bit of a better understanding, but that is also one of my concerns is, do we um allocate that temporary hold on the FEMA dollars, uh, but also being cognizant that uh the federal government does want us to allocate these funds by December of twenty-four and spend by December of twenty-six? And is there a chance in the future that they might, you know, take away any money that we don't spend at any point in time? So we'll continue to keep a pulse on this and keep the board apprised.
Yeah, that, that, that would be my concern is that um, you know, I, at least for now, I, I wanna make sure that we have some funding source to cover that um, that, that debt if we end up having to pay um, all or some of it. And it certainly sounds like right now we're gonna be on the hook for some, at least some of it, if not all of it. Um, so I just think as we consider all of this, we, we, we need to hold that one in the back of our minds that, that, that just may be something we have to fund. Um, so I guess, um, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions as to how we um, how we move forward with this. Um, is there a sense of um? You know, I, I, either do we take it by chunks? Do we try and prioritize? Um, do we go back to various folks and make sure that they're still looking for this, for this, for these funds? Um, uh, I'm open to suggestions. Tom?
Uh, well, at, at least in my opinion, we might be able to take up the public health nurse issue tonight, but for the broader topic.
I, I was talking about the broader topic. Yeah, I agree with you about the public nurse.
Um, yeah, maybe we do ask if Kristen could uh, could just contact and make sure that these requests are all still live. And then maybe we could break them down over the course of several agendas so that we can, you know, ask questions and make sure we understand they ask and, and maybe some of them change a little bit in shape and size. Um, and then, you know, after we've gone through them, maybe in three or four chunks, we get back together and say, basically bucket it. What do we need to reserve for? Like the, what we're talking about, what do we feel comfortable allocating? And what do we feel like we still need to wait and either learn more or wait to see how other things sort out?
Anita?
Yeah, I agree with everyone else and everything that you've said. I am also concerned about the FEMA lack of resources for that six hundred thousand. And also, um, I was thinking about the funds. I mean, we've in the past prioritized those of direct services for the community. So um, the funds that and resources, resources that we allocated for Jennifer and the senior center and sort of any sort of utility or COVID needs, is that something that we are gonna need to kind of revisit as well? Um, so that's the other kind of placeholder that I have in my mind. But I think, um, I agree that if Kristen um could go back and just checks, and some of these are like a year old or over a year old um, requests and see if that's still urgent or something that they're still interested in, or if it needs to be further refined, it could help our conversations.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think that would be very helpful uh for us. Um, so may, uh, John?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, I'm concerned about, uh, you know, having to obligate the money by the end of uh twenty-four. And then you're looking at spending it by what, the end of twenty-six? So the obligation piece is, is what I'm looking at, because we may have some things in there that we're planning for FY twenty-six that you can't obligate for before twenty-six, that sort of thing.
True, but, you know, we, we're under the federal government telling us we have to all obligate by the
Yeah, I know, that's, that's, that's gonna be the trick. I think we almost need a plan that says we're gonna obligate these funds by sex, one at a time, looking for them to be expended over the next couple of years. Kind of an expenditure plan.
So I think what, maybe what I'm hearing what makes sense is Kristen, if you could, um, if you could go back to all of these folks and, you know, update, get an update as, as Tom and, and we've all said, you know, whether they still are, are viable or not, if they have changed in any way. Um, I think that's a starting point for our discussion. And then, um, um, if we wanna take these in chunks, um, over our next, you know, uh, say three meetings, um, so that we can then discuss them and then perhaps at the fourth meeting, um, uh, come to a conclusion in terms of what we're gonna fund and what we're not gonna fund, what we're gonna hold, that kind of thing. Is that makes
Absolutely. And we can also try to um combine them into certain classifications for your discussions based upon needs or departments or another trend that we're seeing. So we're happy to do that.
Right, or as Anita said, based on, you know, sort of direct community uh impact.
Correct.
Okay, um, so I think we have a plan moving forward now. Going back to uh the request to fund the public nurses uh seven point five hours for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, any comments or discussion about that or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Anita. Um, is there a second? All right, um, all those in favor, um, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Dan. Thanks for putting all this data together. It's really been helpful. Um, very much appreciated.
Of course.
Um, okay, um, we're at um old and new business. Um, and our first item is a request from Northern Middlesex Council of Governments for a letter of support for participating in the municipal digital equity program. Um, I think, Kristen, you have a draft of this in our packets, right?
Yes, we do. Um, myself and uh Mike Wells have been uh working with NIMCOG. Um, and Anita might actually have some history on this as well as she's a board member representative. Um, that they are looking to have Westford partner on a digital equity planning program, which will be led by the city of Lowell, but the work will be done by NIMCOG to understand how we can support the digital divide for low-income minority immigrant, uh, not English speakers, seniors, youth, and other marginalized populations in the town of Westford. And we've identified some particular projects that might be helpful, such as uh wifi and the affordable housing projects and others. But this uh work would uh further um review the data of the needs in the town and then further identify uh projects. Uh, and there is no financial obligation for the town of Westford. It would be some staff time participating in some meetings and focus groups and outreach. But uh, in listening to the conversations and participating in the meetings, um, it would be my recommendation that the board uh could sign this letter uh to service the population of Westford.
Any comments, questions? Anita, is our NIMCOG rep, do you have anything to add?
Nope, that was great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there then, is there a motion to uh sign a letter of support?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, next, we have a request to disband the town manager's search committee. I think the reason for doing that is obvious. Um, is, is there a motion to disband the search committee?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then our final uh issue uh under old and new business is to consider approval of recommended language for the ballot question for May third, twenty twenty-three annual town election. We have three ballot questions that are going to appear uh on the ballot. Um, the first one has to do with the bonding of fifty-one Main Street. Um, whether or not that passes at town meeting, it will remain on the ballot because um the bonding for that project has to pass both as a town meeting as well as a ballot. Um, if it fails at town meeting, um, but passes at the ballot, uh, then uh uh, we would call a special town meeting uh to reconsider that uh at a, at a town meeting. So that one will stay no matter what happens at town meeting. Um, the second ballot question um is bonding for the roof replacement at the Lloyd uh, at the Blanchard Middle School. And then the third ballot question is the ballot question uh having to do with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, we approved that ballot question last, uh, last year. I think it was last uh summer or maybe early fall before um special uh, before the fall election. But then learned that we can only bring that forward at a um, uh, at a, an annual election. So it is on the ballot for um, uh, for May. Um, so those are our three ballot uh questions. We have to um approve them. Um, so, um, I don't know, uh, let me ask the board this. Do we wanna separate them out? Is there discussion on any of them or can we vote them as all together? Um, and if I can do this the way the moderator does, you know, uh, the very articles when we have holds on different uh items. But uh, let me ask uh the board if anybody wants to hold out one in particular to discuss. But, uh, let me ask, uh, the board if anybody wants to hold out one in particular to discuss. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So, oh, John?
Yeah.
Now, we need to teach you how to raise your hand with the little button.
Okay, I see. Where is it? Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, I think there's a difference between the three. Uh, uh, the first two, uh, you know, been voted on, but annual town meeting. Uh, the third one is really a non-binding public opinion advisory question, and I think it just should be voted separately.
All right, we'll take them separately. So is there a motion to approve, um, putting on, uh, the ballot fifty-one Main Street? The wording, um, is is that the correct motion, uh, Kristen or Patty?
I can answer it if you like, Kristen.
I would.
Um, yes, this is the wording fifty-one Main Street wording and the MS, no, I'm sorry, the fifty-one Main Street and the Indigenous People. Uh, questions were given to me by council because they were on the ballot previously or going to be on the ballot. Because then the Indigenous people was not the MSBC, you know, the roof. Um, is bond council gave me the language. So we just need, uh, the board to approve putting the questions on the ballot. And if you're okay with the question, the substance of the question itself.
Okay, thanks. So is there a motion to approve putting on the ballot, uh, uh, the question, uh, regarding fifty-one Main Street?
Moved.
Second. And all those in favor, um, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
I.
John?
Hi.
I. Okay, is there a motion to approve putting on the ballot, uh, the, uh, question of the roof replacement for the Blanchard Middle School?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
I.
John?
Hi.
I. And then lastly, is there a motion to approve putting on the ballot, uh, the question of Indigenous Peoples' Day?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
I.
John?
Hi.
I. Okay, so all three of those questions will appear on our, uh, on the ballot at the May election. Okay, um, next. Um, oh, we have a public, oh, I can't do next. It's a public hearing at nine oh five. Um, oh dear.
How did we end up half an hour?
Um, okay, let's, um. Is Jeff Moore, oh, Jeff Morissette is here, so he can speak to the, um, um, to the zoning bylaws. Um, so let's, uh, we can do a couple of those and, um, then we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do till nine oh five. So, um, so, um, let's move to our nine-ten item, which is, uh, the select board is to complete its review of the warrant articles and take positions. Um, so, um, the first one is Article eleven, which is to approve the fiscal year twenty fourteen operating budget. Um, Christian, do you just, not not just for the board, but for anybody who's watching, do you just want to, um, uh, update us?
Absolutely. So, um, at your March sixth meeting, you discussed the, um, outcomes of the fiscal twenty-four budget. Um, amongst yourselves, after we received word, uh, from the Shoba Valley Technical High School that our assessment would be reduced by approximately nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, and we were able to determine that you'd be funding a portion of the, um, sustainability coordinator through the operating budget and other portion through ARPA funds for fiscal twenty-four. And we'd be taking out the Brightly software for fiscal twenty-four operating budget and funding that through, um, ARPA as well. Uh, we then came together with the finance committee and the, uh, school committee in a joint meeting, uh, last Monday. And, uh, the school committee reduced their budget by a particular amount in order to, um, bring us to a balanced budget for fiscal twenty-four. Um, I do not have the exact figures in front of me, but I'm happy to pull that up if anybody needs be. But I believe that, um, Anita was, everyone was on that meeting for select board related to, uh, the budget.
Okay, so we have a balanced budget. Um, and, um, and once again, I want to thank everybody, um, from, uh, the town staff, from the FinCom, from the school committee, from the school administration. Um, all of the department's heads, everybody who worked so hard to, uh, bring us to a balanced budget, uh, this year. Um, I know it was a lot of hard work, um, and, um, uh, we certainly appreciate all the time and effort that everybody has, uh, put into it. So with that, is there a motion to recommend, uh, Article eleven, which is approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget?
Moved.
A second?
Okay.
Um, all those in favor, Anita?
I.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
I. Um, before I move on, Paul Starrett has his hand up, and I'm wondering maybe if he has something to say about the, um, the layout of burn place. So let me turn to Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, Paul Starrett, Town Engineer. Uh, looking at, uh, Town Council's memo on this whole process, which is about eighty pages getting streets accepted. Uh, I think the public hearing only applies when we are transacting land, which we're not doing in this case. Uh, we have all the same gone through the motions of notifying a butters by by mail and and, uh, uh, making plans available at the town clerk's office. But as as I look at the instructions from council, I think it all, the public hearing is really applicable when you're exchanging land. Uh, uh, making, uh, buying or selling land in the process, but that's just my thought.
Okay, um.
We do have a public hearing notice that did go out, um, that lists the public hearing starting at seven PM. It's specifically listed at nine oh five in our agenda, but the public hearing notice that did go out, uh, says seven o'clock. So, um, in my opinion, I think we could probably go out, go earlier than nine oh five. If you would like to be cautious, you could do that as well. But, um, I I would have, I would recommend that we do go forward with the public hearing just to cover ourselves. Um, not to be contrary to Paul, but, um, just in case there's any doubt.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Um, all right, so, um, then let's go to Article nineteen, which is to amend the zoning bylaw to regulate indoor and outdoor commercial recreation and winter commercial recreation. In additional zoning districts and to establish a commercial recreation overlay district related to Kimball Farm in the Shoba Valley Ski Area. And Jeff, I believe, Morissette, um, our Director of Land Use Management, I believe, is here to explain that to us.
Good evening. Jeff Morissette, Director of Land Use Management. So Article nineteen proposes a couple of things relative to commercial recreation opportunities in town. If you may recall, I believe that, uh, the last strategic planning retreat, we had an online survey where we asked, uh, residents and others what they were looking for for commercial recreation opportunities. Um, overwhelmingly, uh, folks supported additional opportunities. And so the first part of this request for town meeting is to simply allow the possibility of more commercial recreation opportunities in additional zoning districts. Currently, it's only allowed in the commercial highway zoning district, which is principally located along Littleton Road. This would open it up to other sections of Littleton Road as well as, uh, Liberty Way and, uh, portions of Powers Road. And there's some other industrial districts, uh, in pockets along Route forty and some other places. So this would still provide a level of review, uh, by the planning board. It would be a special permit process requiring a super majority vote. And the board could decide on a case-by-case basis whether or not it made sense for a given location and a given project, um, to allow it. The second part of this proposal is to create an overlay district relative to Kimball Farm in the Shoba Valley Ski Area. Some folks, um, may not be aware, but these overall properties generally abut, so it could be considered one tract of land, which makes sense for an overlay district. The, but a lot of the property is actually not commercially zoned. Uh, so much of the property is actually in residential zoning districts. And so to have commercial recreation in those areas generally requires a use variance from the zoning board of appeals, followed by a public hearing process with the planning board. So this would seek to acknowledge these longstanding institutions in town, recognize that they've been there for decades and streamline the permitting process going forward. It would also serve to consolidate the public hearing processes into one with the planning board. And that would serve to shorten the permitting process by three or more months, significantly cut down on a lot of the costs and permitting expenses and board and staff resources. And it would do a few other things. It would likely, uh, there's no guarantee, but it would likely increase the likelihood that more of the property, particularly for the Shoba Valley Ski Area, would remain in commercial recreation instead of perhaps giving sway over time to the pressures for residential development. It would also likely increase the chances that more trees would remain in place for the outdoor commercial recreation opportunities. And it would also, um, it provide more opportunities for some year-round employment opportunities for the Shoba Valley Ski Area. Which is a challenge for them. They mostly have seasonal employees now, and they do struggle with that from time to time. So from an economic development perspective, this is good. If you're worried about, um, residential development in some areas, uh, this, this could be a benefit as well. So the planning board report should be in your packet. I think it's fairly straightforward. They do unanimously support this. They think this is good on a number of levels for the town. But again, it doesn't commit the town to anything. It still requires a special permit process. I'm happy to try to answer any questions this board might have.
Anybody have any questions? Mom?
Uh, Jeff was kind enough to share all this with the Economic Development Committee, and they also voted to support this.
Great. Okay, um, is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
In a second?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
I.
I.
Thank you very much.
Oh, don't go away, Jeff. Um, Article twenty, um, which is to amend the zoning bylaw to add seven Carl Thompson Road to the Residence A zoning district. Um, and this is a citizen's petition. Um, so I guess I first ask, is this one of the proponents from the, uh, from the citizens, um, uh, an attendee? And if so, does he or she want to speak? Do we know if there's?
So that would be Maria McCarthy, if she's out there.
She is. Here she is.
I'm here.
Hi, Maria.
Hello.
Um, so this is your, uh, article, uh, that you've brought forward, uh, as a citizen's petition. So, uh, do you want to tell us first about it and then we'll hear from, uh, Jeff?
Yes, absolutely. Um, this is a piece of property that is the, uh, tail end of Carl Thompson Road, which is just a light industrial. A park off of Groton Road. Uh, there's three small family-run businesses there, very quiet, unobtrusive. Um, this property has currently one building on it. It was a residence and it had a studio on it. Nineteen seventy-nine, I believe, is when they added like a recording studio. Um, the area about seventy-five percent, three sides of the property is completely abutted by residential properties. And, um, the current property right now is more than seventy-five percent wooded lot, um, pine trees, mature pine trees. We have wetlands on one side, vernal ponds on the other, so it is an integrated, um, ecosystem with all of our neighborhoods. And it's been, you know, relatively quiet, nothing going on. I'm a director butter. Um, in, uh, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the property was leased to a local landscaping company. Used it as a landscaping yard. Um, they didn't have a use variance at the zoning board of appeals. They actually withdrew their petition. The zoning board had recommended that they find a more appropriate property for its use. Part of the reason that it went to the zoning board was because, um, the use of the backup beepers of the trucks and the dumping of uh, land waste there. It was just, it was a constant noise nuisance to the neighbors and also, you know, not really, uh, using the land as it was supposed to be and having, you know, environmental impact. Um, recently, it was purchased in August of twenty twenty-two, um, by a, uh, industrial and residential developer under an LLC. Um, and they are trying to develop it. We had, um, the lawyer present a couple of different proposals to us. And both of these proposals were just massive, commercial, um, highly destruct, destructive to the environment. And as residents, we started feeling like the, and after talking to, um, people on the board, um, talking to people in town. It was like, it seemed like the only viable mechanism to try to protect our neighborhood and this this terrestrial part of this wetland ecosystem is to hopefully try to get it rezoned to residential A, which will kind of add it. If you looked at the zoning map, you can see how it just kind of adds it to the rest. Um, I believe that this parcel is like a remnant. Um, all of our homes in the area were actually carved out of a big industrial one A that I believe was Fletcher granted at one time. So historically, yes, this has been industrial one A, but leaving it there because it has historically been that way doesn't make any sense. So we would like to see it so that it, as a residential property, you could get a couple of condos on there. You could bring more families into the Dabnasset neighborhood. You're not going to clear cut the property. You're not going to impact the environment negatively, and it forms a nice buffer, um, to the, you know, a nice transition. So that was our proposal. Uh, the planning board on, um, March sixth voted us down stating that the owner has a right to develop their property, um, and that they did not support a residence petition to change the zoning of another's property. In this case, we believe that this needs some thought. It needs environmental study. Um, paving over four acres, you know, clear cutting of for, forest and paving it over definitely has impacts. I mean, there's proven studies of the impact of deforestation on the wetlands hydrology. I mean, I, there is a drainage easement on the property. It actually runs alongside, um, my property. I can't imagine what that overflow would look like if you clear cut that entire forest and replacement with pavement. The current proposal, the property, um, is for resale by the developer right now for one point five million. And the plan is for thirty-four thousand square foot contractor garages. So this is going to be embedded again in a piece of land that is seventy-five percent surrounding by residents. So we believe that giving this piece of property to residential isn't going to, um, the developer can still develop it. They're both a residential and an industrial developer. They can put a couple of condos on there. The environment is preserved. And we aren't going to have, uh, continuous issues with the environment and the degradation of our entire ecosystem as well as, you know, maintaining our right in Massachusetts to have that quiet enjoyment of our property and putting something massive like this with thirty-four thousand square feet of contractor garages certainly is going to take away any kind of enjoyment of all of our backyards. In addition to, you know, we need to have a further study because most of the residents do have well water that abut this property. So that's how this came about. Um, and that's where we stand now. We really need the planning board. We need Westford, um, conservation to get involved because you need to look at the property. It's not enough to look at the zoning bylaws and say, oh, they're a hundred feet off the other wetlands. Well, you tear down all of those trees and you've destroyed the water flow into the wetland. So it doesn't matter if you put a building a hundred feet from it. Um, I think it needs further study. I think that the decision came too quickly. Um, and I don't believe that there was enough consideration on this. Um, this particular developer has multiple projects going on in Westford, so I understand that, you know, we also want to protect the rights of somebody who has recently purchased the property, um, to not lose the value of that property. And we believe that by rezoning it to residential, they won't lose the value of the property. It'll just develop it in a manner that is much more appropriate to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jeff, do you want to report on the planning board hearing?
Sure. Thank you, Andrea. So, um, I guess to summarize, I think while the planning board had, uh, some sympathy for, for the butters, uh, I just want to state a couple of things. So first of all, the town has not received any formal applications for development for this subject property yet. But yes, we were aware of a couple of possibilities that were presented to the neighbors, but the town hasn't received any applications. So I think the planning board was uncomfortable, uh, recommending rezoning of a property against that property owner's wishes. Um, because they did recently purchase it, and it would, in essence, be denying them development rights that they essentially relied upon when purchasing the property. The planning board also recognized that this was the second parcel, I think, in less than two years where there have been citizens petitions to rezone one parcel in this same area from either Residence A to IA or IA to Residence. from either Residence A to IA or IA to Residence A. And so I think the planning board feels that the most appropriate course of action would be to do some sort of corridor study or look at certain sections of Route forty to see if there was some planning initiative to address some of the friction caused here and to look at it from an overall study instead of reacting one parcel at a time. So I think, while sympathetic, they don't feel that they could support it at this time, would rather study it and look at it more holistically.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, are there questions or comments, um, from the board? Tom?
Uh, I guess Jeff, uh, just procedurally, so does the, uh, I guess, does the authority reside in town meeting to make this kind of rezoning happen? Or does it require some sort of process legally to respect both the rights of the abutters and the purchaser? Because I'm just, I'm wondering what our range of motion here or what the town's range of motion is here at the, uh, at town meeting.
So my understanding is that town meeting does have the right to rezone, uh, properties like this. They have that legal right. So what is before you tonight is simply, um, you know, a recommendation for town meeting one way or another. But I believe town meeting does have this right.
Okay, if I may, Andrea.
Yeah.
Is, so is, is there some mechanism that we could employ that would basically push pause here and, and sort of do the broader evaluation that you're talking about? Or there's not really a mechanism like that. The mechanism that we have is, is what's before us in the citizen's petition.
That is correct. We are reacting to a citizen's petition.
Um, and there's, there's no way we could pause and evaluate and then make a decision. That's, that, there's not a way to do that. It's either or.
Well, in my opinion, if town meeting were to decide that further study is warranted, um, they could, uh, in a motion, sort of refer it back to the planning board for, for studying. So, but for the short term, for here and now, what before you is a zoning bylaw amendment, and town meeting has to act on it one way or another through the customary measures. They can either vote to approve, deny, definitely postpone, or refer the matter, uh, back to the planning board for further evaluation.
Okay, so town meeting could say, we, we postpone this and we basically restrict the right of doing anything on this lot until further study until some point in the future.
You mean not take action on the amendment? You can't take away the current. We can't take away someone's rights right now. Um, all that is before town meeting is whether or not to rezone this one parcel.
So the owner could proceed in the existing zoning in all cases and all outcomes from the town meeting except where town meeting voted to support this citizen's petition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anita?
I have, um, two questions, and one is, um, has, has this been done before or recently? Do we have a precedent for this where understanding that town meeting might have the right to do to rezone property, but, um, when was the last, since something, you know, I'm looking for an example, I guess. And my second question, and maybe this is for Maria and just kind of thinking through that site process and all those questions about stormwater. I feel like once an, an official application goes into the planning board for development, that's when all those conversations would take place. I don't, and I could be wrong on that, but, um, that's, that was my assumption. And someone could also verify whether or not I'm correct.
Jeff, do you want to answer Anita, Anita's questions, at least the last one?
So any, once there is a project formally proposed to town, any board having, having jurisdiction will have the opportunity to review it. So obviously, if there are wetland resource areas involved, and we believe that there are, and there may be other, uh, resources, uh, the Conservation Commission will have their full opportunity to, to review that. Planning board would also, if, uh, stormwater management permit is triggered, they'll have the opportunity to review it relative to stormwater. It, um, would also have a minimum, um, site plan review, uh, which has some criteria. Um, and then depending on the specific project, it may or may not trigger additional reviews. But until we have a formal application, we won't be able to answer those questions. Respect to, what was the first question?
Accident and whether or not, I mean, yeah.
So I'm sure there's someone on this board that can probably go back to when things happened along Route ten. But in recent years, since I've been here, the last, uh, few times I think this has come up, it was, uh, supported by the affected property owner. Um, and usually the last number of, um, zoning amendments were either changing zoning or creating overlays. They usually were providing either at the request of the property owner, or at least with the support of the property owner, or an overlay that was providing options, but not taking away any existing development rights. But I'm sure if we go back further than ten years, I'm sure there are instances in the past whereby land was being rezoned, and it may or may not have been, you know, you know, fully supported by all affected property owners. But I can't speak to that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Patrick Shields, who is in our audience, has his hand up. Patrick, are you out there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, second mute. Uh,
That's okay.
I, I am also in a butter. Um, so I was, uh, one question I had kind of for Jeff, though. And, you know, it's one of the, uh, detail that I don't fully understand, but the lawyer had mentioned part, the first part of their plan. They, she said they, they could do by right, presumably meaning that there were no existing, there were no existing rules on the books that prevented them from doing the first phase of their project. Uh, so would, if, if, like, I know from a recent edition of my house, I needed to get approved, approval from Conservation Committee because my work, uh, was within a hundred-foot buffer of registered wetlands. Um, but if theirs is abutting or the exact thing, you know, does not fall within that, then if I hadn't been there, I wouldn't have even gone to Conservation Committee. So I, you know, it's my own, I'm not understanding, but if they do that, is, you know, is there a way that they could not actually have to get those approvals and those things just go through without even us being able to present our concerns of the, the process?
So, so first of all, there's, there's generally a lot of confusion about the term as of right. So as of right means that the use that is proposed is allowed by zoning and that they don't need any special permissions for it. That does not mean that there isn't some review process. So there would likely be at least site plan review. There could be some other reviews. There could be stormwater reviews. And if any of the proposed work is within a hundred feet of a wetland resource area, that would also be subject to review by the Conservation Commission. And so there would be public hearing processes for both the planning board and the Conservation Commission, at which point the, the various abutters could have opportunity to weigh in throughout that public hearing process.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I, I answer your question, Patrick?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, anybody else have any comments? By the way, Paul Starrett, you still have your hand up. I assume it's just because you haven't taken it down yet. Um, I'm gonna assume that. Uh, okay, um, okay, uh, Anita, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I guess I would, I would tend to agree with where the planning board stands right now on this, just because there isn't that application process, or, you know, that application hasn't started yet. And it does feel a little bit um, concerning, at least for, in my opinion, to, to make this change without, um, the, the owner, property owner being on board. So maybe that would be something that we reach later, but I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting it tonight.
I, I, I'm on the same page as you are, Anita. I'm not comfortable supporting this, um, for the reasons that you just stated. Um, uh, and it may be that, you know, we give the planning board the opportunity to, um, um, study and investigate the corridor that, uh, um, along that, uh, part of Route forty that Jeff was discussing and was talking about, that the planning board has indicated an interest in. So um, I would not be in favor of supporting this. Uh, John?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, I think, uh, uh, you know, of course, town meeting could overrule that. We just, we're just going to vote not to recommend is what I would do. On the, on my copy of the motions, it shows planning board recommends five zero. Uh, I think that's an error.
Yeah, I saw that today, too. I think that is an error. So when the, um, so that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
Tom?
I'm, uh, it's, it's certainly possible that there are other properties, this property, other properties are sort of absolutely miscategorized in their zoning. So I do hope that there's a way that the, the, uh, the planning board can take a look at that. Um, I guess I'm also a little bit hesitant to, um, I mean, the, the zoning board, and we, we have a right to take a position on this, obviously, but the planning board's a fellow elected board that has, um, you know, a clear responsibility here. And I think that they looked at this in a thoughtful way. So I, uh, I, I hope that we can put some attention on what properties might be part of some sort of obsolete zoning configuration and make those changes. Uh, but I, I think in this particular case, I would agree with, uh, with my colleagues here.
Okay, so, um, let me phrase this properly. Is there a motion not to recommend Article twenty?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of not recommending Article twenty? Um, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. So the, the select board also does not recommend Article twenty. Um, thank you, Jeff. Um, Maria, thank you. Um, obviously, you'll have the opportunity to bring your article forward at town meeting and to present it to town meeting, who actually, at the end of the day, has the ultimate say. Um, but thank you all. Okay, um, we're at, um, okay, it's nine oh five. So we can go back to, uh, the public hearing, um, which is a request to lay out Burn Place as a public way. Um, so I guess, uh, is there a motion to open and open the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi, and is there a motion to waive reading of the public hearing notice?
Don't move.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Paul, we're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Paul Starrett, Town Engineer. Uh, this is my favorite part in the street acceptance process. You have voted your intentions to lay out Burn Place, and tonight you're actually going to lay out, uh, I hope, uh, Burn Place is a public way. This is a betterment project. The residents have been uh, very cooperative, working, uh, with the engineering department and Public Works to get this done. I'm personally excited because this is the eighteenth one that I've been able to get done, and this is my eighteenth year. So I'm, I'm rounding my average up to one unaccepted road every year and, uh, have a couple more to go. So they, everything is in order. The planning board has, uh, um, given you their favorable recommendation. And, uh, we will be at town meeting, uh, uh, to get this, uh, uh, voted by town meeting.
Okay, great. Um, any questions? I don't see any. Is there a motion to recommend?
Do you need to ask for pub- public comments because it's a public hearing?
Oh, all right. Well, I didn't see any, but is, are there any public comments? And I didn't see any in the attendees, so, um, thank you. Um, I don't see any, uh, public comment. So, um, is there a motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend.
Okay, a second. Um, and all those in favor? Um, Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. And is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Take it.
Take it.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Um, okay, and our, uh, last article is Article twenty-three, which is to ensure the APR and Drew Garden property is enforced. And I see that Mark O'Leary uh, is here, and, um, I know we, uh, when we last spoke, or when we last saw you, we sent it back to you for some, uh, further consideration by the Ad Commission. So if you'd like to report, uh, on, uh, what the Ad Commission, uh, did and what the current, uh, article is, uh, that would be terrific. So, Mark?
Hi, my name is Mark O'Leary. I live at one oh five Concord Road. Thank you very much for your, your time. Um, I, I sent out the, um, the revised language.
Yep.
Um, and, um, um, we were influenced by town council, so that's why we made a particular indication as to where funding would come from if necessary. Uh, my understanding is that, that, that account one five one would have money if indeed it, it came to that. Um, so that was part of our thinking. And the only other change was um, the type of language introducing the motion that we would, um, encourage the town, or we would ask the town to, um, um, give their support and encourage the Board of Selectmen for, um, you know, some measure of, um, enticement to Mr. Masalidin, uh, owner of sixty-six, sixty-eight Boston Road. So I believe
Okay.
was just the beginning and the end of the, uh, warrant article that we revised.
And I think you also revised, you went from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars for legal, uh, possible legal fees, right?
Yes, and, um, and then, yeah, and then just indicated from what account it would
Yeah.
come from.
Okay, um, comments from the board? Yeah, John?
Is there a budget issue with this as far as, uh, saying we're going to appropriate twenty thousand dollars? Is that included in the budget somewhere other than just a general account?
Uh, Kristen or Dan, one of you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can start, and if I misstep, Dan can step in. Uh, we do believe that there would be a budget, uh, shortfall as we did not appropriate the twenty thousand dollars into the fiscal twenty-four budget.
So my understanding, if I may, may I speak, Madam Chairperson?
Sure. Yes.
So, um, I, I'm not, um, well-versed in this, but my understanding was that account one five one would have some amount of money in it that would be used for, um, items like this, but I, I'm not an expert on it. That was my understanding.
Um, Dan, why don't you respond?
Sure. So, uh, when this article originally came up, um, we were planning on appropriating funds from Free Cash, uh, for this specific S, because it seems like a, a non-recurring article moving forward. And, uh, back when Jody was still here, we had reduced the legal services budget from, uh, hundred and ten thousand to ninety thousand. So that being said, I don't think we can afford, uh, a twenty thousand dollar hit to that operating budget next year. So we thought Free Cash is the way to go with this.
Yeah, once again, the, our, our, uh, itemizing or listing of, of money is, um, more to just show the seriousness of our efforts and, um, not that we would have, need to come to that point of using the money that, as the town council indicated, there are many other steps that can be taken that would it'd pretty take about a year with letters back and forth from either the Board of Selectmen or the Town Council, uh, to Mr. Masalidin before it ever got to the point where there would be a need of finances to, um, move towards litigation of some kind. So, um, I guess we were just thinking, um, it would be a, a way to indicate the strength of the, the town behind this, this issue.
Just, just Mark, as a respectfully, every time we have town council write a letter for us or make a phone call for us or get involved in negotiations, even short of litigation, it does cost the town money. Um, but, um, Tom?
Um, so I, I support the intent behind this. I think, um, the version of this I could vote for is probably something that doesn't include the, the line item funding. I think we have a, a budget process with lots of trade-offs and lots of complicated, I think we have a a budget process with lots of trade-offs and lots of complicated. Uh, balancing acts, uh, you know, right down to the last dollar, basically. And so um, I would find it hard to support a, an earmark basically that comes in at the end. Um, just because I think it's, it's difficult to accept sort of line item earmarks at the end of a process that's gone on for months and months and months. But I I don't want to take anything away from my support of us energizing the conversation around what happens with that that property. So. Um, I'm not sure, there was some, I guess my own feeling is I'm I'm not sure that. The select board needs to take a position on this. We're basically looking for a feeling from the town. It's sort of a direct ask from the town. Uh, but as an individual, the version of this I would vote for would be basically the, the same language, but without the specified line item funding.
So if we were to um, scratch the funding, um, and it's somewhere around um. What whatever made sense um. With our language, um, would that be something that would, that would, I guess. Change tonight or um, in in terms of getting the select board to vote on the warrant article?
Well, so the only way now, I mean, uh, I believe that the only way now you can change that. Mark is on the floor of town meeting, okay? So it would have to go to the floor of town meeting. You'd have to amend it on town meeting and then town meeting would have to vote on. Your amendment and then uh the article itself. Um, I. You know, I, like Tom, I support the intent behind this. Anything that we can do to um engage. Um, the property owner, um, begin negotiations again with the property owner. Um. In years past, I personally have been involved in negotiations with the property owner. They have not borne fruit. Um, but if there is a way to sort of reinvigorate and re-energize those negotiations, I would certainly be very supportive of that. But I do share Tom's concern. The way this article is written, it's, it's, we're asking town meeting. For their sense and and their direction towards us. It's like a resolution from town meeting directing, you know. The select board, you know, to take action. And so um, it, it doesn't feel. It doesn't feel quite right that I sh- that we should be taking a position on something that we're looking for. Um, uh, input um, from town meeting. Um, so um, I share your cons-. I I sh- I share your concern, one about the money, Tom, but also I think. I don't think there's a need for us to take uh as a board to take a position on this because we really are asking for a sense of town meeting. Um, any other comments from the board? Okay, um, so what is the board's pleasure?
Leave the motions as they are because it says select board recommendation at town meeting. We can make a recommendation based on maybe a. Opposed amendment to take the fifteen, twenty thousand dollars out. How about that?
We can just leave it as is right now and we can, we'll be in session on the, on March twenty-fifth and can talk about it then. Does that make sense to everybody? Like nods of heads, something? Um, Tom?
I I think it'd be most constructive for us to do that as opposed to, for instance, voting it against it if we had strong feelings about the budget. I think that would get. Extra confusing. So.
Yeah.
I I would also recommend that we uh not take a position.
Okay. So um, so Mark, we're not going to take a position on this and um. We will wait till town meeting. If we take, okay?
Appreciate it. Yep, thank you very much and.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, um, so we are finished with our review of the town warrant for for town meeting. Um, oh, no, did we? Yeah, we are. Okay. So with that, uh, moving to our nine uh forty P M item, anybody have any board reports or updates? I don't see any. Um, okay, uh, nine forty-five town manager's report, Kristen?
Sure, thank you. Uh, there's two items on the town manager's report. There is a grant uh request for. An electric vehicle under the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program through the Department of Environmental Protection. In the amount of seven thousand five hundred. And there's a purchase order for Prestio. For software and services in the amount of a little over twenty thousand as requested by the technology department and the documents are in your packet. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, um, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
I.
I. Um, is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, just raise your hands. Okay, um, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.